I don't think I'm, I think, can people hear me? Looks like we have two over here that are still, I guess, I guess I, Sherry and Michael, you two have charge over, over who's coming in. Well, welcome. My name is, my name is David Levitt, and I am so thrilled to be with you all tonight. It's remarkable to me that we can gather across the state in so many different locations. And I wonder if I can just start with a couple of housekeeping things. The first is, I have, I have two hosts tonight. One of them is Sherry Hall Everett. I'm not sure where she shows up on your screen. She's in my top left. And Michael Guttu is floating around somewhere. There's too many, too many, too many people in my, in my speaker view, or my gallery view to be able to see who's all here. But it looks like I just added a few more. Maybe, maybe we can start by, let me, if you can unmute the microphones for just a moment. And while you're unmuting the microphones, I'm going to say that Michael and Sherry are going to give a link to, in the chat window down below, or on your screen, to a survey. And if you, if you want, this survey is something that I'd like you to click on and take. I'm having delegates who attend these meetings click on these chats, or click on this survey. And it really, it's a survey that goes to what, what are the kind of crimes that are the highest priority to you that you think we should be prosecuting? I'll share those results at a town hall meeting in the next few days. My question for you is, if you had to, if you had to pick your favorite part of the United States Constitution, your favorite, your favorite amendment, or just your favorite something about it, what would it be? And let's just take 30 seconds and just, go ahead and speak up and, and just tell me what that might be, and in one, in one sentence, why.
I like the checks and balances system, because it'll keep any one person from having too much power.
I like that, too. And I'll comment on one person having too much power here in just a minute.
Freedom of speech.
Fan of the Fourth Amendment.
Tell me what you like about that.
Well, I like my right to privacy that I'm not going to come into my home and get up in, I mean, in my private life.
Anyone else have, then we'll, then we're going to take off here. We're at.
Freedom of speech.
What comes to mind is the way it starts, it's we, the people. And I think that the concept of unity, the concept of asserting responsibility, as well as the benefits that come from the document.
I, I love that, both our rights and our responsibilities. Oftentimes, we, oftentimes, people understand way too much about their rights, but not enough about their responsibilities.
I like that there's enumerated powers for the federal government. I think we forget that sometimes.
I, I think, I agree. Let's mute these microphones. And, and I'm thinking that I'm not muted, but if you have, if you have questions from here on out, please, please feel free to go and, and put them on the chat line, and I will take a crack at answering them. I want, I want you to know how grateful I am for the United States Constitution. And I have to confess that my gratitude for the United States Constitution is not something that I grew up really understanding. And it wasn't until I went to Ukraine in 2004 and found myself smack dab in the middle of a revolution for freedom, in the Orange Revolution, that I truly began to understand what it meant to be free, and what it meant to have the kind of freedoms and the kind of protections that that document gave me. But the, the thing that startled me the most was that I, I, and I'll, if time permits, I'll, I'll go into the backstory as to how I wound up in Ukraine. But the short version is that after nearly 15 years of being a criminal defense attorney and an elected county attorney, I was burned out. And my wife and I accepted a, an invitation to go to Ukraine and to help the Ukrainian government reform its criminal justice system. When I got there, I found a government that had a constitution that was quite similar in its substance to ours. And I, and I found that it had lots of great words and lots of great meanings, but very little of it was followed. And very little of it was something that truly gave people constitutional rights. For example, the Constitution of Ukraine guaranteed the right that every Ukrainian citizen could have the right to a jury trial. Yet there had, to this day, even as we speak right now, there has never been a jury trial in the history of that country. Because despite the fact that they have that right, no one knows how to do one. Now, I want to tell you what my favorite part of the United States Constitution is. And, and it's tough to, to truly give a favorite when there's so many things in there, because I like the concept of the separation of powers that one, you talked about. I like the fact that, I love the thought that it's we, the people, and we're unified, and we have rights and responsibilities. I, I'm grateful for the Sixth and Seventh Amendments of the Constitution, which is the right to a trial by jury. The Sixth Amendment being in criminal trials, and the Seventh Amendment to be in civil trials. And I want to, I want to give you, if I can, just a couple of quotes from some, from some of our founders that talk about the principles of the jury trial. John Adams said, and I think this is a remarkable statement, "Representative government and trial by jury are the heart and lungs of liberty. Without them, we have no other fortification against being ridden like horses, worked like cattle, and fed and clothed like swine and hounds." That's a remarkable statement, that, that both representative government and the jury trial are the, are the heart and lungs of our freedom. Alexander Hamilton said this, "The friends and adversaries of the plan of the Constitutional Convention, if they agree on nothing else, concur at least upon the value set by a trial by jury." James Madison wrote, "Trial by jury is essential to secure the liberty of the people as any one of the pre-existent rights of nature." And finally, there's this most famous quote from Thomas Jefferson. And I consider, quote, "I consider the trial by jury as the only anchor yet imagined by man by which a government can be held within the principles of its constitution." And I, I've spent a lot of time wondering, why is that? Why is this jury trial such an important element of our freedom? And it's because, I think, to say it in a sentence or two, because with a jury, with a jury trial, people, not government, decides whether to take a fellow citizen's freedom. Or, say it differently, without a jury trial, government and not people would make that decision. And can you imagine the problem in our society if, 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 if we had no right to have people be the ones that decide to curtail the power of the executive branch of government? Because we, we all know that the founders gave us a legislative branch to tell us what was against the law, and executive branch to enforce that law, and the judiciary to keep those all in harmony. Now, as, as we saw through these quotes, that the one power that the people never gave government was the power to take away someone's liberty. They retained that to themselves through the, through the jury. Now, in, in the Civil War, to give you just a little bit of a historical lesson, in the Civil War, we introduced something called the plea bargain. And we introduced the plea bargain as a mechanism to avoid going to trial as a convenience against having to assemble juries. And, and that practice grew in the Civil War until we got to prohibition, and, and then it grew considerably more. And then by the time we got to the late 1960s, just about 50 years ago, the Supreme Court of the United States finally ruled for the first time that plea bargains were in fact legal. Before then, it had been an open question. But by the time that the Supreme Court ruled that plea bargains were legal, we were settling, we were settling our, our cases at a rate of 75% of our cases by plea bargain, and only 25% of them by a jury trial. Which meant that 25, that 75% of the time, the government decided guilt or innocence by charging someone to clear up here, and then requiring, you know, and then, and then, you know, doing, charging up here so that the defendant would plead down here. And, and we did it for lots of reasons that we thought were good. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, one person after another saying, I wonder how I can usurp power from the people. It happened gradually over time. Well, what happened, what happened between 1969 and today? Well, today, we settle by plea bargain more than 99% of the cases we file. And, and, and so, you know, when Lori says, Lori Stewart said to me at the beginning of this meeting, that she likes that the, that the Constitution keeps one person from having so much power. That's what I like about it, too. But, but, but if you can imagine a country where there's one person, one person who has the power to investigate anyone he wants to investigate, accuse of the crime anyone he wants to accuse, make a public spectacle of them because they're, have been accused of a crime, and now they're going through the news, and all of that rigmarole and expanse and the potential of taking their liberty away, and then that person has the absolute ability to settle by plea bargain and have 100% complete immunity, I'd say that person has too much power, wouldn't you? I'd say that power is un-American. The reality is, that's the power that I hold as the elected county attorney. That's the power that I hold as the elected prosecutor. And there are 29 of us in this state, plus an attorney general. There are 30 people in this state that have the power, within their own jurisdiction, to investigate anyone they want to investigate, charge anyone they want to charge. They never have to prove the allegations they make. And, and I say, it's time that we reform that. And I say, it's not something that people are ever going to get back unless prosecutors voluntarily give that back. And I'm running for Utah Attorney General so that I can do across this state what I'm doing in Utah County, and that's giving that power back to people. Designing a system that, that in time will reduce plea bargains. You know, it took us 140 years to get to where we are, and we're not going to, we're not going to be able to educate a people and change a system that eliminates all plea bargains in my lifetime. But in my lifetime, and in your lifetime, we can reverse the trend so that we can give to our people, to our children and our grandchildren what the founders thought was the one thing upon which they could agree. They may not agree on speech, they may not agree on size of government, they may not agree on federal versus state powers, but the one thing upon which they agree is that we are not going to give this unlimited unfettered power to the government. And, and what's worse now is that that power is focused on one person in every jurisdiction. And so you have a, you have lots of outgrowths of this that become problematic. In 1970, when plea bargains, the year after plea bargains became legal, we had 200,000 people in American jails. Today, you know, we have over 2.3 million people in American jails. We have so many things that are illegal that, that make, has the potential to make everyone a criminal, that, that we're essentially at war with each other. 85% of the people that we put in jails are not violent people. Maybe we need to find a different solution for community protection. You know that my, one of my other favorite amendments of the Constitution is the Eighth Amendment, the prohibition against cruel and unusual punishment. What happens in today's world when you get arrested and you get a mugshot? I'm looking at about 50 mugshots right now. The only thing it lacks is, is the little plaque. But we all know that that means, that that, that gives a meaning that you're a criminal. Yet, that gets put on the internet for the rest of your life, and, and no one ever assume, no one ever asks the questions of whether that person was ever convicted or not. These are the things that we need to look at in our criminal justice system. These are the things, reducing plea bargains, increasing jury trials, finding different ways to, to take care of our people. Because the people we put in jail, every one of them is someone's mother or father, son or daughter, husband or wife, brother or sister, you name it. And they're going to come back, most likely, and live among us. But will they come back and be better because of their participation in the criminal justice system? Today, the answer to that question's no. I'm running for Utah Attorney General because I'd like the answer to that question to be yes. In Utah County, we're taking tremendous steps and engaged in great measures to return power to people, to give drug addicts help rather than incarceration, because we recognize here in Utah County that we will never incarcerate our way out of the opioid problem, and we will never incarcerate our way out of addiction. We have to find a different solution. And, and, you know, I don't need to be the attorney general. But I've been, I've been the Utah County Attorney now for 15 months, in Utah's second most populated county. And I've never even had a phone call from our current attorney general. We need leadership at the attorney general's level to bring together county attorneys so that the 30 of us who possess this incredibly awesome and un-American power begin to exercise it in a way that's unified, and in a way that recognizes the need to bring back that power to people. And so I need your help. I'm running against an undeniably decent human being, a fine lawyer, and someone who is, you know, someone with whom it would be enjoyable to go out to dinner with. He's got a lot of money behind him. He's got a lot of power behind him. But I'm trying to get the one thing behind me that will help us all, and that is people who have the ability to cast a ballot. And so I'm hoping that tonight, our discussion will persuade you that maybe we ought to look at a different direction at the Utah Attorney General's office. I'm going to start now with some questions. Most of these, most of these comments are more ministerial, and so I'm still looking for a question. Okay, David, David to me says, "What are the differences between you, John Swallow, and Sean Reyes? There must be something significant that differentiates you from, from the current and prior Attorney General." Well, I, I will tell you undoubtedly that there's absolutely differences between us. And I will, and I will be the first to acknowledge to you that I am not necessarily the complete package. In fact, I will tell you even more definitively, I am not the complete package. Neither is John Swallow, and neither is Sean Reyes. I will also tell you that this is not a high school popularity contest. This isn't about the person that can tell the greatest jokes, this is not the person that can give the greatest speech. This needs to be about the person who, whose vision most aligns with yours. And I will tell you that if you feel a need to reform the criminal justice system, if you feel the need to reduce prosecutorial power, if you feel the need to find different solutions for our nonviolent offenders who are in jail, then I'm probably your guy. Because in seven years of being the Attorney General, Sean Reyes hasn't even addressed these issues. He's, 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 he's been doing important work with the Underground Railroad, human trafficking, and those undeniably are important issues, but they're not really Utah's issues. If you feel like John Swallow got a raw deal when he had, when he resigned from office seven years ago, if you feel like he was railroaded, that he deserves another chance, then he's probably your guy. But again, public office is not a public right. And just because you resigned from, from an office doesn't mean that you have the right, unless your vision is what you're looking for. John Swallow's campaign is based very much on the theme of prosecutorial power, of reducing prosecutorial power. And if you line the two of us up, we're very similar in that regard, except that I'm the prosecutor that has the power saying, I'd like to reduce my power. And, and I think that that speaks volumes. Okay. How do you think we've gotten from innocent until proven guilty to guilty until proven innocent? And how can we mitigate trial by media? You know, it's interesting to me, thank you, David, for your question. It's interesting to me that another portion of the Ukrainian Constitution is the presumption of innocence that we have in ours. And at first blush, I, you know, at first, I concluded that the Ukrainians got that presumption of innocence from us. But they, they didn't. I was shocked to learn that the presumption of innocence in the Ukrainian Constitution comes from the Soviet Constitution. Words on paper. Now, we have the presumption of innocence in the American Constitution, but as David has pointed out, they're simply words on paper, because once we charge someone, we assume that they're guilty. That, that is, that is a mindset that if, if you want to ask yourself, what can I do for my country, you can change your own mindset on that. You can start to tell yourself, well, yeah, but I wonder if he really, he or she really is guilty. Let's see what the evidence says. I, I have a lot of press conferences about a lot of cases, because we file a lot of cases in Utah County, because there's lots of people in Utah County. And I never issue a press release or have a statement about someone's accusation that I don't say, let's remember that this individual is innocent until proven guilty, and these are merely accusations. It's something that we, it has to begin with changing our own thought process, and gently reminding those around us when they make comments that, you know, of that presumption. And that's, that's how I think we change that back. The next question from John, "How will you start to reduce plea bargain margins in Utah as the Attorney General?" Let me tell you how I'm doing it in Utah County, and then I'll tell you how I would propose to do it as Attorney General. What I do in Utah County is that I've, I've assembled a team of six or seven of my most experienced prosecutors, and I say to them, you know, the standards are different now. We no longer are saying, what did this guy do? And let's charge everything that he did with the hope that we can then induce him to plead guilty to something lesser. What we do is, we say, what does society need? What's, what's, what's the minimum amount of government action here that the society needs to protect society because of these actions? Let's charge that. And, and when the defense comes asking for a plea bargain, we say, well, the plea bargain here is a fair trial. You can plead guilty, or you can go to trial. And one of the interesting things that, that I've encountered is that some of the greatest opposition that I have received doesn't come necessarily simply from law enforcement or from other areas, it comes from criminal defense attorneys. Because criminal defense attorneys would rather take a deal and the, and the money that comes from the quick fee than go to the trial, because it's so much more difficult to go to a trial. We, we have to re-educate people that our criminal justice system isn't about relationships and giving bargains and giving deals, it's about evidence and demonstrating what the facts demonstrate. So I started in Utah County by changing how we charge. We don't charge, so there's lots of fluff in charges, we charge what we think society needs. And as Attorney General, one of the key provisions of the law as it relates to the Attorney General is that the Attorney General has supervisory powers and authorities over county attorneys. Now, in my 30 years of practicing law, I've never really seen that implemented. I wouldn't be a heavy hammer, because I view county attorneys as my colleagues, but on day one, I would sit down with them and say, okay, let's come up with standards by which we charge. Let's come up with standards by which we settle cases. Let's come up, because, you know, it's, it's not, it's not as easy as saying, let's just stop giving plea bargains. And it's not as easy as saying, let's stop charging. I am, I am completely amazed, changing the topic to illustrate a point, I am completely amazed by the Salt Lake City Airport construction, how planes take off and planes land and passengers come and go, and all around, they're building a gigantic new airport. And, and that's kind of what we have to do here, because we have this living, breathing criminal justice system that we have to remodel and change back to our liking and to our needs while we use it. And, 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 you know, that's how I would do it at first as the Attorney General, is, is, is set standards for when we plead, set standards for how we charge, but you, but you've got to realize that it would be a huge victory to go from 99% plea bargains to 90% plea bargains. You know, if you do that in the first three or four years, then, then you've gotten people's attention. Then, then that's when you start to go to work. And so this is something that will take some time. But, you know, the problem is, we are, we are so much closer to zero jury trials at 99. something percent, that, that, you know, we've got to get started now, otherwise, that Sixth Amendment and Seventh Amendment right of our Constitution, the ones that our founders say are the most important, it will, they'll simply be words. it will, they'll simply be words on paper. Thank you. James says, I'm extremely intrigued by the powerful idea that we need a different solution for addiction besides incarceration. Can you go deeper and more specific about what you will do as Attorney General to help criminals fix their lives rather than make them worse with incarceration? James, let me tell you what I'm doing, what we're doing here in Utah County. And I say, I, I say "we", because it very much is a group effort. While, while we do so through my authority as Utah County Attorney, we are implementing the ideas and the concepts of, of professionals on every side of, on every side of, of the criminal justice equation. But let me start by saying this, that addiction, that the opposite of addiction is not sobriety. The opposite of addiction is connection with another human being. People become addicted, not because the drug is so powerful. The drug is powerful, yes, but people go in and get morphine and opioids in hospitals every day of the year and come out and are just fine. People get addicted because they have no human connection. They have, there's something in their life that has become so traumatic and so painful that, that it becomes an escape for them. And, and, and so our current system is, is that we, because we've, because we, our, our model is to put them through a criminal justice system. We put them through their criminal justice system. We paint a label across their face that says they're a criminal. We separate them from the rest of society because we're scared of criminals. And, and suddenly, instead of bringing people together, we have separated them. And, and, and instead of giving people the opportunity to get better, we've only made it that much worse for them. And so what we're doing in Utah County is trying to bring everyday individual members of society, people like you and me, and putting them together with addicted people who are not violent, have, you know, getting help with their community service, giving them help with their, with their life skills, finding out, digging in and finding out what is it that's causing this addiction. Because in the end, people aren't going to change unless there's something that triggers inside their heart that says, I want to change. And we've told ourselves that we're going to put you in jail and put you in jail and put you in jail and put you in jail until you're just so sick of going to jail. Well, you know, some people aren't ever going to be sick of going to jail. But a jail's more of a release than anything for a lot of people. We, we have to find, and, and, you know, in Utah County, we spend, we spend, we, we spend $15 million incarcerating nonviolent people. And so we're trying to connect people with people in Utah County. We're trying to give them alternatives to incarceration that include community service and life skills classes and, you know, the like. And, and, and again, we're making progress. And let me tell you, one of the reasons why I'm okay if I, you know, do I want to win this election? Well, I'm, I'm running because I want to reform it in the state of Utah. But if I don't win this election, I got plenty to do in Utah County. And I'm grateful to be able to do it in Utah County. And, and, and so one way or the other, I'm going to continue reforming a system. The question just is, is it in Utah County or is it in the state of Utah? Fred asks, can you reform the Attorney General's office? I believe I can. And, and let me tell you the story about my being elected in Utah County as an example. When I ran for Utah County Attorney, I was opposed by 23 law enforcement agencies in the county. I was opposed by every employee in the Utah County Attorney's Office. It's not because nobody liked me, it's because nobody knew me. And it's because I, I, I ran saying, I'm going to reform this system. Well, you know, you want to talk about an interesting day one of work, when you show up and the 90, 90 people in the office that opposed you for your election now work for you. You know, you don't get very far by edict. You, you, you get where you get by persuasion and, 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 and lots of discussion and lots of give and take. And I, and I will tell you that out of the 100 people in my office, while there are a few holdouts still, I'm still going to get them. But, but by and large, people have signed on to the vision. By and large, people are, are on board. And, and, you know, it's going to take law enforcement a little longer, not because we disagree on the final solution, it's just because it's, it's difficult to change. It's, it's difficult to acknowledge that what we've been doing for the past 40 years may not have been the most effective. So yes, Fred, I think that I can reform the Attorney General's office. It won't happen overnight. But it, but i- if given the opportunity, I think that I can do it. Jennifer asks, having gone through COVID-19, what are your thoughts on how the governor has handled the pandemic? What decisions do you support and what, or what do you not support? Where should we go from here? You know, I have to say that I'm so grateful for the men and women who are dealing with this. I, I have never in my life been more sick than I was over the last three weeks. It hit me just like a ton of bricks after one of these town hall meetings. And I called a few days later and asked to be tested and was told no, because of my, because there were too many people and they couldn't be tested. And my symptoms weren't bad enough, and so I waited another five days and called again. And they finally agreed to test me. And I, my, my hat's off to them. And, and I, I will say to you that as, as a guy who sits in the, in a chair that has to make a lot of decisions that affect a lot of people's lives, I'm willing to cut people who are trying to make those decisions on the fly a lot of latitude, because they're doing the very best job they know how to do. Now, is every decision going to be perfect? No, it's not. You know, they're going to make mistakes. But, but at the end of the day, they're doing what they, what they think is their very best call. And I, I have to say that I'm, I'm proud to live in a state that's only one of seven or eight states that doesn't have a state mandated stay-at-home order. You know, you may disagree with some leaders, one way or the other, who have issued those orders. But the fact that Governor Herbert has held the line and not done that, I, I'm, I'm grateful for, because at the end of the day, our liberties, our, our liberties have to transcend this COVID-19 virus. Our safety and our security can never be fully guaranteed. We have to stick to the principles. And so, you know, when I closed the economy down like, like it has, I, I don't know. It's tough for me to say without sitting in those, in that chair. And at what point do you say that there's enough loss of life? Those are very difficult decisions. I, I'm grateful for the, for what they're doing. You know, I, I, I've had enough people armchair quarterback my decisions to know that I don't have all the facts. And so I, I support our leaders, I pray for our leaders, because we've got a, we've got a mountain ahead of us. Because our economy is going to be get, our, our economy is going to become much more difficult. It, it, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of, lot of, lot of things facing us. Jared asks, Sean Reyes accepted over $220,000 in campaign contributions from the Kingston family, a known criminal family. He said he would put that in escrow and he spent it, but then he and his campaign spent it. And the Kingston family was not prosecuted for crimes they committed. What are your feelings on the issue and how are you going to reform the issue if elected? You know, that's an issue that, that I have chosen not to lead with as a campaign strategy, because I, I believe that if people want to see that, they'll see it. It's certainly there. I'm not certain that the amount is that much money, as much money as that, but it's a lot of money that he took. I, I will, let me tell you one of the problems with what we're talking about and, and influence peddling. In Utah County, where we have been settling for years 99% of our cases, I had some lawyers that were accepting, I had, I had a criminal defense attorney or two that was giving out free, high-priced Utah Jazz tickets to my prosecutors while I had cases pending with them. And, and to me, that crossed a line that was just so outrageous that those lawyers no longer worked for me. It was written up in the newspaper, if you want to go Google it. There's nothing, there's nothing more important in our system than the integrity of our system. And, and if you are taking money from someone that you regulate, if you're taking money from people over whom you have power, you better, number one, be willing to get rid of it the moment you have to regulate them. Better yet, not take it at all. Or, you, you know, you need to make sure that everyone, I mean, you just, it's just, campaign finance is something that is, 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 it's a huge blight in American politics. You know, Sean has $350,000 in his campaign account. And, and I, my mom and my dad and my brothers and my sisters and a few close friends donated to mine. I think I got to $25,000 in my campaign account. But, but there's just some things you don't do. And just because you can, doesn't mean you should. And, and so, you know, if, if I'm the Attorney General, will I do that? No, I won't, because I don't think it's right. I just don't think it's right. Okay, thank you for your comment, your question. What constitutional issues were, were usurped during this COVID crisis? And what, and should we do something about them? What should we do about those now if elected? What would you advise the governor not to do? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm in a little bit of that situation now as the Utah County Attorney, because the Health Department has the ability to issue a, a decree. The, the Health Department can issue a stay-at-home order. And the question is, what happens if someone violates it? Who, who's the person that's in charge of enforcing that? Well, it's me, is the Utah County Attorney. And, and I've made very clear that if there's a law that I believe is unconstitutional, if there's something that I believe usurps our basic rights, I'm not, I'm not going to enforce it. And, and that's my, that's my, I'm going to say that's not only my absolute right, that's my absolute duty under the Constitution. I swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. And that's what I will do. And, and now, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's not a scenario under which you, you wouldn't prosecute something. You know, I mean, you, you can always come up with a scenario that's outrageous that would, that would shock you to the point where you think, well, you know, that guy ought to be prosecuted. But, but by and large, I think that we ought to take these things as suggestions, that it ought to be, you know, socially responsible for us to, 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 to distance ourselves and that we ought to think of others and do so of our own accord because of, because of our care and our compassion for other human beings rather than being forced by the government to do it. Barbara, hello, Barbara. Barbara, if it's the same Barbara Graff that I know, we go way back. And it's nice to have you in my meeting today, Barbara. Besides this important issue that you have brought to the forefront, what other important issues that the AG for the Attorney General's Office would you need to tackle? Well, Barbara, you know, the Attorney General's Office is the lawyer for every state agency of state government. And, and as the lawyer for every state agency in state government, I believe that my responsibility is to, and it's what I do in Utah County. You know, oftentimes you find people that work for the government that think that, that the public is a pain, that the public is, you know, some, you know, they're somehow the enemy. And, and, you know, I, I believe that our role as, as government servants is to, is to be a servant of people. And so if I'm the, the county attorney and my lawyers that work for me are advising all the, all the, all the agencies of government, my, my, my advice is make sure that everything you do as an agency in government is intended to serve people and not, and not throw a roadblock or a stumbling block in front of people. Recognize that people have, are here because they have problems, because they have to deal with this, and that, and that your role as government is to serve them, not take a number and wait until you're ready to serve, you know, to, you know, you know, to, 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 to deal with their problem. I, I believe that that, that that starts at the top. I believe that that attitude can be, you know, can be purveyed by, 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 by two people. The governor, because the governor is the, the man or woman that advises, or that runs all of these agencies. And number two, the Attorney General, because the Attorney General is the person who advises all of these agencies. And the Attorney General is completely independent from the govern, from the governor. So I believe that that's a, you know, you know, returning, returning government to people's benefit, I guess, is the theme that I would say. And the third thing, Barbara, criminal justice being first, that being second. And, and third, I would simply say is our public lands. Utah is owned by, you know, the federal government owns 67% of our public lands. We receive a pittance in Pelt money and payment lieu of taxes. We have to find a way to, either to get ownership of our state lands or to force the federal government to pay their fair share, because we're all paying it in property taxes and it's time that they do the same. Okay, and David says, it's appropriate that you think, it's, it's appropriate you think the person is guilty or you wouldn't charge them. I think David's going back to the question of the presumption of innocence. Absolutely. I mean, I, I, I've never charged anyone in my life whose guilt I wondered, about whose guilt I wondered. But, but I will say that I'm not infallible. And, and there's not a prosecutor on the face of the earth that isn't, you know, that, that isn't fallible. And so we maintain this standard that you're innocent until proven guilty, despite the fact that I, I'm convinced of the guilt. It needs to be verified by eight people. That's the whole point of the jury trial, is, is not vesting all that power in one guy that says, yep, you're it and you're guilty and I'm going to send you away. And so it's a, you know, it, it, it's a balancing act for me as county attorney, but, but it's certainly one that I, that I maintain the very forefront is, is the fact that these, that every one of us is presumed innocent. What are your thoughts on TSA? You know, I, I'm not sure that we've really ever thwarted any terrorist attack with TSA, frankly. I like it when they're kind to me going through security, but I, but I, I do, you know, I, I, I'm not convinced that, that we get the bang for our buck that we ought to. And I think that it's an intrusion ultimately on, you know, it's one more encroachment and, and something against which we need to fight. How strongly would you defend federalism? And I'm going to assume that you mean, what you mean by that is the sovereignty of the state of Utah. You know, I, for a lot of years, I think, I, I, from 1992 on, I have flung two flags. You know, I, for a lot of years, I think, from 1992 on, I have flung two flags. I've flown the United States flag on one side of my door, and I've flown the state flag, either the Utah flag. I lived in Pennsylvania for four years, and I flew the Pennsylvania flag. I am proud to be a citizen of two sovereign nations, the United States of America and the state of Utah. And and I, I believe that, you know, that, that, that the rights of the state of Utah and the rights of Idaho, the rights of Colorado, I'm a big defender of states' rights, and if I'm the Attorney General, I will defend it vigorously. Fred has sent me a link that I can't click on. It won't, it won't link to me, so I'm gonna have to skip that thread, but I'm happy to look at that later. Caleb says, many other states have pursued criminal justice reform that seems to have translated into redefining felonies into misdemeanors and abusing prosecutorial discretion. For example, as in California, refusing to prosecute theft under $900. I'm hesitant to, I'm hesitant to support reform that reduces the quality of life for law-abiding citizens. Well, so am I, Caleb. I'm not in support of any kind of criminal justice reform that would reduce the quality of life for law-abiding citizens. What, what you have to realize is what we're doing right now is reducing the quality of life for law-abiding citizens. And and, you know, if, I'd like you to go take the survey, because I'll tell you that there is no rational, there is no rational connection between what a felony is and what a misdemeanor is. What it has to do with who has the strongest lobby. Let me give you, let me give you an example. If I take the license plate sticker off of my car and I put it on, and I put it onto your car so that you don't have to pay your taxes for a little while, that's a third-degree felony, five years in prison. If I, if I, I'm deer hunting, and I have a deer tag that's unlawfully purchased, and I'm tracking a really big buck through the central region of the state, and I happen across the imaginary line that takes it into the southern part of the state, and I kill that deer in the southern part of the state, despite the fact that five minutes later I was in the central region, that's a third-degree felony, five years in, five years in prison. If I beat my wife, which I don't, but if I beat my wife to the, you know, beat her senseless, that's a Class B misdemeanor. If I kill someone negligently, not using alcohol, that's a Class A misdemeanor. And and, you know, so as prosecutors exercising prosecutorial discretion, you can't get hung up on what's a felony and what's a misdemeanor. You have to look at conduct. You have to look at what hurts people the most, because quite frankly, even though it's a felony, I'm not likely to, I'm not likely to ever choose to prosecute the deer case over the domestic violence case. And so, you know, criminal justice reform is, is a buzzword that has got to mean something. And to me, it means this. I, I like to call it redemptive justice. And that is, you know, redemptive justice in two ways. Number one, we, we have to redeem, like a stock, like a share of stock, we redeem it from a piece of paper or something of greater value, we have to redeem our criminal defendants and to help them recognize and realize their human potential. But even more importantly than that, we have to redeem ourselves from the, from the poor way we have dealt with criminal justice over the last 40 years. And so, you know, I agree with you 100%. I am not in support of things that reduces the quality of life for law-abiding citizens, but I'll tell you right now, the way our criminal justice system is handled, we're not doing it now. Okay. What about the incarceration of mental health issues? You know, Brenda, that's from Brenda. That is such a difficult issue. We've got to get beyond a system that utilizes the criminal justice system as a warehouse, as a warehouse for the mentally ill. I don't have all the answers to it, but I, I do know that the criminal justice system is not, is not equipped to deal with the mentally ill. That's not our purpose. If we're going to return the criminal justice system to what the criminal justice system should be and can be, we have to use, we have to be willing to find different solutions for mental health than just dumping into the criminal justice system. And 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 so, you know, I, I, I believe that we should incarcerate people, whether they're, you know, regardless of their status, if they are dangerous to other people. You know, we, we, that is the tool of incarceration, to protect us from other people's violent acts. And and how we deal with that, the mentally ill, we certainly don't let mentally ill people who are violent go free, but, you know, we put them in other places, like the, the state hospital or some sort of environment where they can receive the help they need, but won't necessarily, you know, but are not in a position to hurt us. you know, one of the many, one of the many tools that people talk about is drug court. We have drug court, we have mental health court, we have veterans court, we have all these specialty courts to deal with people who have these unique problems. And and they're all valuable tools, but drug court, for example, it's easier statistically speaking to get into Harvard as an undergraduate than it is to the Utah County Drug Court, because there are so many addicted people and so few slots. And so, you know, we've got to come up with something that, that, that helps us with these problems. And, you know, I'm gonna keep going because we've got lots of other questions, but I'm happy to come back to that at some point if you'd like me to. Plea bargain from Ronald, plea bargaining. Sandy City traffic ticket for turning without signaling. Circumstances, no cars on streets within a quarter mile at 2:00 AM, so no cars to signal to. I wanted an opportunity to be heard in court, even though that was, wasn't denied. They added seven counts to the same, unless I just paid the fine. I used driver education and didn't have to pay the fine, but sure didn't like the leverage of the extra charges. It had zero component of safety and was all about money. I'm sorry that that happened to you. Ronald, I, I will say that, that it's a problem in our system that we need to change. It needs to be about public safety, not about leverage to get you to plead guilty to something. Jennifer Chamberlain, would you put child sex offenders in a different category than drug addicts? They're both drug addicts, right? Actually, they're both addicts, right? Absolutely. Every, a child sexual abuser is, a child sexual abuser is a dangerous person, because there is nothing in our society that affects another person's life and other family's life than sexual, than sexual abuse. And 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 while they are addicts, they, they are affecting lives on an exponential scale. And I'm not certain that we've found the right answer to how to deal with sex offenders, but they are certainly not like drug addicts in my mind. Drug addicts in my mind, they hurt us all, but, but not in any degree of the same degree of child sex offenders. John says, what does Sheriff Mike Smith think about your approach to criminal justice reform? Let me be just as blunt as I can about that, John. Mike Smith is a good man, and I'm a good man. We feel very differently about criminal justice reform. He's, he's, he is much more, he is much more of the opinion that we need to lock him up, and I'm much more of the opinion that we should only lock up dangerous people and non-violent people. And and so, Mike, you know, Mike Smith is, is doing his best, and I'm doing my best, but we have different visions for criminal justice reform, frankly. James, thank you for your thoughts. I love your thoughts on addiction recovery. Thank you very much. I mean, you know, I, I've been kicking it around this system for almost 30 years, and I will tell you that we're doing it wrong. Most of the time, not all the time, but we can do a better job, and thank you. Thank you, David, for your comment. David says, you're very forward-thinking and solution-oriented. This is something I think the AG's office has lacked for a long time. Thank you. I appreciate it. From Abe says, just joined, what major reforms have you brought to pass in Utah County? Let me simply say, I've initiated a different screening process so that, so that cases are screened rather than towards going to trial. I've streamlined the court process so that we're more efficient in our court system. I've created a pre-filing diversion program that says, you know, if I can help you, if I can help you to not be a criminal before I make you a criminal, then I think society's all better off. So we've engaged in a pre-filing diversion program. You know, I, I am, I'd be happy to maybe send you some links, Abe, to some newspaper articles that detail some of those reforms. I, I, I think we're getting short on time, so I'm, I'll, I'll leave it at that right Caleb says, I've personally seen numerous addicts abuse their long-suffering human connections to enable their addictions. How does a state or county-wide system not end up enabling addiction when families can't? Isn't there accountability, is there accountability in this reform? Caleb, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to one-up you on this one and say, I've never met an addict that didn't abuse their relationships. That's the nature of addiction, that they will, that they will abuse their relationships at every turn. And and it, you know, reform doesn't mean that you are a pushover. You have to take a tough stand, but you have to do it. The key to criminal justice reform is not in how tough of a stand you take. The key in criminal justice reform is how compassionate and humane, and humane you are in dealing with people's problems. And and and, you know, the toughest, you know, some, some of the toughest people I ever prosecuted were the same people that came back and hired me to defend them when they fell back on the same problem, because despite the fact that I was so tough on them, they knew I cared about them. And that's, and that's, that's the key, is, is, you know, not allowing yourself to be taken advantage of, but not becoming so jaded because you have been taken advantage of, that you are unwilling to open your heart to someone. Jennifer asks, do you agree with hate crime laws? Please explain. You know, I'm one of the few people in the state that's probably actually ever charged the, Utah's hate crime. I charged it in Payson when a group of kids accosted and beat up a black Latter Day Saint missionary. One thing that I have, one thing that I have come to truly understand is that we act in so many, so many of it, we all have bias. But I, 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 I used to not really be in favor of hate crimes, but I have to say that I have been willing to charge it, because I have to look at it from the perspective of the person who is the, the object of the hate. And I think that it, it does, the reason why I have changed my opinion on it is because it terrorizes, hate, hate crimes terrorize more than just the victim that's the victim. It terrorizes the entire class of the community. You know, when the, when the kids in Payson assaulted the Black Latter Day Saint missionary, it wasn't simply the Black Latter Day Saint missionary that was victimized that night. It was the entire black community in Utah County. And I, and I think that we have to be aware of these biases and, and, and just not tolerate Isn't the deer hunting case an example of where a plea deal might be just? How would you help correct the absolute silliness of some of our classifications of crimes against our communities? You know, we need a, we need a strong voice in the legislature to correct against some of the silliness of the classifications of crimes, but, but you, but you, you're never gonna fix a whole problem that way, because you, you can't really write a law that deals with every fact scenario that you see, because we see some really crazy fact scenarios. What you've got to do is utilize your prosecutorial discretion to, to, to make sense of the fact scenario. I mean, you've got, you've got to take the law and, and apply it in this situation in a way so that, so that isn't silliness. Question, if we support you for this office, who will take your place as county attorney? Will they continue reform efforts? I will say that if I'm elected to be the Attorney General, there'll be an appointment made for someone to fill my slot, and, and quite frankly, I would not, I would not, I would refuse the Attorney General's spot if, if someone who didn't share my vision were to take my place. I did not start in Utah County while I have started to turn it over to someone who doesn't share my vision. I've got a good enough relationship with the County Commission, who I think would make that appointment, or the Republican Party, to, to say, this is who needs to be the county attorney, and here's why. And that's, that's how that would work. Ronald, thank you for your, for your clarification. And Ronald says, if prison time isn't to be a major deterrent, there should be some deterrent. Perhaps that can be compensation to victims, other ideas. But those are all good ideas, you know, compensating victims, community service. Sometimes jail is a, is a real deterrent. I mean, it, jail's not a deterrent to an addicted person, but jail's a deterrent for a, for a black collar criminal. And there are, you know, I'm not anti-jail. I'm anti-senseless jail. And and so, that, that is, you know, really, you know, there, there is a role for incarceration. But, but the role, the role in incarceration has to be something different than a one-size-fits-all. You broke the law, therefore you're going to go to jail. We are, we are at an hour and 15 minutes, and I am, I've got to say that I am so incredibly grateful for your willingness to be with me tonight. And I'm gonna thank you for your questions, and, and I'm going to summarize here in about five minutes, or four, about five minutes. And and I want to tell you just a brief story as to why, and to where my efforts first began, and I think I, I may have, I may have touched on this. I may have touched on this early on. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't remember, but if, if they have, then please forgive me. I think I mentioned that in 2004, my family and I went to Ukraine to help the Ukrainian criminal justice system. The government had, the government had poisoned the opposition candidate Viktor Yushenko with lethal levels of dioxin. He went from being a man that looked like a Ukrainian version of Cary Grant to just a pocked, gray, action-swollen figure that looked like he was at death's door, and in fact, he was at death's door. The government rigged the election, declared themselves the victor, and Viktor Yushenko went on the square near death and said, you know, we've had our independence from the Soviet Union for 13 years, but we've never had our freedom. And I won't leave this spot until they carry me out in a box or until I'm recognized as the president of Ukraine, and I call upon Ukrainians everywhere.
as the president of Ukraine, and I call upon Ukrainians everywhere to join me on this square." And the shot behind my back is what occurred when Viktor Yushenko called his countrymen together. Within a matter of a week, there were 500,000 people in the square. Well, the government really freaked out, and they cut the traffic to the city, they cut rail traffic, bus traffic, plane traffic, car traffic, and, and, and they started putting fake newscasts on the, on the television. You can see from the photograph that orange is the predominant color. Well, that was Viktor Yushenko's campaign color. There's a woman in the crowd there named Natalia Dmitrik. And granted, I was there, I was there every day. I mean, I, my office was half a block from this spot. And, and Natalia Dmitrik would protest by day, and by night, she was a new, she was the sign language interpreter on the screen, and, and she would go and translate these fabricated newscasts, and she, she said, you know, "I just felt, I felt dirty. I felt like I couldn't participate anymore, and I knew what I had to do." And so, she tied an orange ribbon around her wrist, hid it under her, under her sleeve, and went into the television studio and, and began to translate. And she said, "I'm speaking to the deaf of Ukraine. I'm tired of, and, I, I, I'm, I'm tired of interpreting lies, and I will do it no longer. Our country is in revolution, and I'm speaking to you, to the deaf, to tell everyone in the country to come to the Capitol, because we are in revolution, and Viktor Yushenko is our president." Then she said, "I don't know if you'll ever see me again." Well, you know, the crowds had stopped coming because of the, the government had cut off the traffic, and the crowds had dwindled, but when the word got out through Natalia Dmitrik, this nondescript translator at the bottom of the screen, people came by the tens of thousands, and within about 10 days or two weeks, there were over 2 million people in that square, where they remained, working together and regulating themselves against a communist regime for over six weeks, until the government recognized Viktor Yushenko as the president. Now, why do I end with this story? I end with this story because to me, it illustrates what one person can do, not Viktor Yushenko, but Natalia Dmitrik. When you do everything you know you can do, and you ask for whatever multiplication factor there is in the universe to help magnify your efforts, then amazing things happen. And I, and I end with this story because I'm, I'm saying to you that we are in real, serious peril in the United States of America. Our criminal justice system is pitting people against people, our criminal justice system is, is making it so that, you know, we're not as prosperous as we should be, and, and we are losing, quite frankly, our, our constitutional rights. And it's our constitutional rights that, that, that make us free. And I want to go back to John Adams, who said, "Representative government and trial by jury are the heart and lungs of liberty. Without them, we have no other fortification against being ridden like horses, worked like cattle, and fed and clothed like swine and hounds." We are dangerously close to the point where we lose our trial by jury, not because it's not in the Constitution, but because no one in the country knows how to do one, and there's no history. And, and I'll end with this picture of a much younger me, standing in the crowd in Kiev at the Orange Revolution. It was in that moment in time when I understood what my duty was as an American. And, and my request for you is to take up the cause, and, and, and to join me. I need your help. I'm running against a, a, a slick, articulate, decent guy with lots of money, but he's not focusing on the things in which we should focus. We, we have to get back to basics, and I need your help to get there. And, and I would, I would encourage you to please vote for me, and ask you to reach out to your fellow neighbors and state delegates, and if you have the time to help us with telephone calls or, or anything else that doesn't take you out of your comfort zone, I would ask that you join us. And, and I just want to tell you, thank you for joining in tonight. I hope that you'll tune in again. If I haven't answered your questions, I hope that you'll give me another opportunity to do so. But for now, I, I'll bid you goodnight. Please ask us your like, comment, and share our stuff on your social media. It seems to be the only way to drive this nowadays with our current coronavirus. And please email David Levitt, excuse me, david@davidlevitt.com if you have any questions. Yes, Sherry?
Yeah, I was going to say, you can also go to David's YouTube channel and some of the other channels and share videos, share things on Facebook if you're on Facebook or Instagram, and then just email us if you'd like to make some calls for us or help do some reaching out. We will put a script together for you that would give you some of the information, and, invite your fellow delegates to come and to one of these meetings. We'll be having these every day, 3 o'clock and 7 o'clock, and you're welcome to come back, but we'd sure love to have you reach out to your other delegates and tell them not to miss one of these.
We, we hope you'll come back. All right.